All right. This meeting is called to order. Eddie, would you call the roll, please?
Cobb, Russell, Kuta.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Boyd.
Petrus.
Here.
Let me note that Councilwoman Russell is excused. She's attending to her mother, who's not doing very well. So amendments to the agenda?
Mr. President.
Yes, councilman?
I move to amend the agenda to move first reading's consideration of adoption requested to before the mayor's comments.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So we will do that. And the reason we're doing that is because we have a resolution to read, and I'm going to put my glasses on for this one. And this resolution comes from Vice President Russell, again, who could not be here. A resolution recognizing Alfonso Wilson Jr.'s 66 years as mail carrier with the U.S. Postal Service in Cleveland. You can applaud. And declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. And I'm going to read the whole thing. Whereas after 66 years on the job, Alfonso Wilson Jr. is retiring at the age of 86. And whereas Wilson started his career as a postal carrier in 1957, I was two, and since 1980 has been delivering mail and developing relationships in the Cedar Hill and Fairmount areas. And whereas Mr. Wilson says his customers are one of the favorite parts of his job, saying many are like family to him. And whereas in addition to his service to the post office, Mr. Wilson is a trustee for the National Association of Letter Carriers and stayed connected with many mail carriers he helped inspire and guide throughout his career. I wonder, that's got to be a lot. Whereas upon retirement, Mr. Wilson says he doesn't know what his future holds, but he offered these words of wisdom. If you care about everybody, everybody will care about you. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Cleveland Heights that this council hereby recognizes Alfonso Wilson Jr. as he retires after 66 years as a mail carrier with the U.S. Postal Service. It is found and determined that all formal actions and deliberations of council and its committees relating to this passage of this legislation that resulted in the formal action were in meetings open to the public and in compliance with all legal requirements of Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Notice of the passage of this resolution shall be given by publishing the title and abstract of its contents prepared by the Director of Law once in one newspaper of the general circulation in the city of Cleveland Heights. It is necessary that this resolution become immediately effective as an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety of its inhabitants of the city of Cleveland Heights, such emergency being the need to recognize Mr. Wilson in a timely manner. Wherefore, provided it receives the affirmative vote of five or more council members elected or appointed to this council, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage. Otherwise, it shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest time allowed by law. So, Mr. Wilson, this is what we have for you. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
I want to thank you. I want to thank you really for this. And I also want to like really tell you what a pleasure it was to serve. 1980, I came up here, and I'm just retiring now. And I felt like I didn't need to retire, but I was getting off into so many other things, union stuff, along with that, decided I needed to sit out. But thank you very much for recognizing me.
You're welcome. Sir, can you stay?
We need to vote on it?
Can we get the council people gathered around? I think that'd be nice. The mayor, please.
Sure. Actually, Council President, if we could just have a bit of discussion before we do pictures?
Oh, sure.
Because I think people might want to say a few words.
We'll go back and have a discussion.
Because I've got something I wanted to present to Mr. Wilson as well. So I didn't want to...
I'll tell you what. We'll take the picture and then we'll do that.
All right.
Okay. Get in like you're friends with each other.
Right there.
I can't imagine going up and down those steps. Oh, God. I can't even do it in two hours.
Well, I just realized we didn't vote on this resolution. So Mayor, would you like to?
Yeah. I think first, I'd like to say to Mr. Wilson that you have my utmost respect and admiration for your years of service. I can frankly only hope to even approach half of the amount of service that you have provided the people in this community. I know that we appreciate it. For one, I will be so happy to sign into law this resolution. But I also wanted to express my own personal respect and admiration for your service to the people of Cleveland Heights in the form of a mayoral proclamation. I'll briefly run through it. I know some of it's a bit repetitive, but. Whereas Alfonso Theodore Wilson Jr., who is also known to his friends as A.T. and Teddy, is a resident of Cleveland Heights, Ohio. And whereas Mr. Wilson was hired as a substitute clerk by the United States Postal Service in 1957 and became a letter carrier a year later. And whereas since 1980, Mr. Wilson has delivered mail in the Cedar Hill and Fairmount areas. And whereas Mr. Wilson's 66-year career made him the longest-serving mail carrier in Ohio and one of the longest-serving carriers in the country. And whereas during his decades of service, Mr. Wilson's customers became his extended family. He looked out for them, and they looked out for him. And whereas Mr. Wilson loves serving the public, believing the opportunity to serve is its own reward. And whereas at 86-years-old, Mr. Wilson recently retired. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city of Cleveland Heights and its residents, I issue this proclamation celebrating the life and service of Alfonso Wilson Jr. and congratulating him on his retirement. We commend him for a job well done and wish him many happy, healthy years to enjoy his retirement. Mr. Wilson, thank you.
All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So moved.
I was waiting. Do we have a second? I think we have a bunch of seconds. All right. Any discussion? Because I certainly don't want to squelch anybody's accolades. Okay. Well, I would just say, from Vice President Russell, who couldn't be here, she was just so happy to honor you with this resolution, especially because, you know, of your union brother and sisterhood with her. So make sure that I pass that along. And with that, this motion has been, I mean, it has been motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't think so. The motion passes. Congratulations. Communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a few things today. The first, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude to the Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board for their March 7th vote to approve the financing plan for the Taylor Tudor Historic Rehabilitation and the beginning stages of the Kane Park Village Revitalization Project. I think their vote, you know, I understand that there's always a question about where the public sector fits in private development. But I think that their vote in investigating this project and looking at the finances is very forward-looking and collaborative with the city and with the development community to really build our community again in ways that we're only just now scratching the surface of. So I wanted to express my thanks to the school board. I also wanted to express some thanks to Matt Weimer and WXZ for their partnership through this process and the expansive version of transformation in Cleveland Heights that they share with this administration. Without their partnership, we wouldn't have gotten to such an expansive vision of the Kane Park Village and the Taylor Road Corridor. This was a happy surprise and has resulted in, I think, a very valuable partnership for Cleveland Heights. And I did want to urge council to, you know, don't stand in the way of the momentum that we are creating in an ongoing way. We keep pushing. And so I urge council to vote yes today on Ordinance 29, 2024, so that we can keep that momentum going and keep building Cleveland Heights. And I think that Taylor Tudor is a perfect representation of preserving what makes our city great and adding to it in a way that brings us into the 21st century. So I'm hoping to urge council to pass that so that we can keep this train rolling. So I also wanted to invite everyone to, let's see, to join us tomorrow, Tuesday, March 19th, because the city of Cleveland Heights will be holding a public meeting at Monticello Middle School. That's from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. The address for Monticello Middle School is 3665 Monticello Boulevard. And I wanted to let everybody know that tomorrow's meeting is about public safety. We will be investigating the future planning for the Noble Road Corridor and the neighborhoods surrounding it. Again, tomorrow's meeting is about public safety, and so the police chief, Chris Britton, and fire chief Jim Harry will be there to answer your questions, to hear your concerns. Because this is a long process of planning so that we can ensure that the neighborhoods surrounding the Noble Road Corridor and the business districts that are included in the Noble Road Corridor really do, you know, achieve sort of the attention that the city government has promised for years. At this point, we are engaged in the first planning process of its kind here in Cleveland Heights. We have never, as a city government, taken the time and expended the energy in planning in the Noble Road Corridor area. So this is something that we're starting again for the first time. And so I want to encourage everybody, and I think everybody in Cleveland Heights has a stake in this, but especially the people who live adjacent to the Noble Road Corridor or on the Noble Road Corridor itself, I encourage you to come, express your opinions, your experience to our police chief, our fire chief, and our planning staff, so that we have an understanding about the real needs in the Noble Road Corridor around public safety. And now, finally, I'd like to address Councilwoman Janine Boyd directly. So I wanted to say that I haven't known you sort of the longest, and I don't know you the best. But I do know that in the past nine years that I've known you, I've never questioned whether your heart was in the right place. And I am glad that it led you here to serve our community, and I'm glad that you are following it now. Thank you. And that concludes my mayor's comments for this evening.
Very good. Any other? Okay. So let's move on to city administrators' report.
Mr. President, good evening, members of council. I just wanted to give you a brief update on the status of the Lennox Garage. You may recall, the Lennox Surrey Garage has been closed since early February. And at the time of that closure, our assumption was that we would probably be looking at a full demolition of the garage and replacing it with a surface lot. Since then, our engineers, GPD, have reviewed the original plans for that facility and concluded that the facility is salvageable. Now, it requires some significant repairs, but it can be repaired and preserved, and is the most viable option at this point. The original decision was based on certain assumptions. And one of those assumptions was that the existing walls on the ground floor could be independently supported. But after review of the existing plans, it was apparent that the second story of the deck supports the first-story walls, much as the joists in your home support the basement walls. And so, once they took that into account, what they realized was that you couldn't just remove the upper deck and that the new surface lot would have to be reconstructed with a new storm sewer, new retaining walls, new asphalt, and grating. And when you take all that into account, the cost of doing that was exponentially more than the cost of even undergoing pretty substantial repairs to the facility. So our plan at this point is to, the GPD is currently working on specs, so that we'd be in a position to come back to council to seek authorization to bid out and award the contract. Our hope is that that'll happen by the next council meeting, and we can get this project moving on. Now, in the meantime, we certainly recognize this has been a significant inconvenience and disruption to the customers of the businesses in this area, and we're working on a few options to try to mitigate some of that inconvenience. One of them being, we're in discussions with the Russos for the longer-term use of the about 50 or so parking spots behind Firestone for use by the patrons of our businesses in that area. We're not there yet, but we're in serious discussions about that. And we're looking at a few other options as well to try to ease the inconvenience. But that's our current plan.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Oh, yes, please.
Our city is very fortunate to receive a once-in-a-generation infusion of tens of millions of dollars from the federal government. And I am very concerned about the distribution of these funds in our city. I share this concern because I have reached out to the administration many times, in person and over email, requesting that updates be provided to the public. And so I just wanted to share a couple of my concerns with this. Firstly, council's going to have to decide before the end of the year whether nonprofits should receive funding in 2025 and 2026. But if a group does not receive its funding until later this year, it's going to be very difficult for us to decide whether a group should continue to receive its funding. Also, council allocated ARPA funds for a variety of initiatives without having a good sense of whether the administration has the capacity or skill sets to administer some of these programs. And so council and the public need to receive regular updates so that we can reallocate those funds, if necessary, and avoid having to return those funds to the federal government. And finally, it's also worth noting that because it's taken so long to distribute these ARPA funds, our city has earned over $1 million in interest on this money that's been sitting in our checking accounts. And if we have to return some portion of that to the federal government, it's my understanding that we're going to have to give some of that interest to the IRS, because you can't earn it and keep it for money that you have to return to the federal government. So these are some of my real concerns, and I hope that the public can receive regular updates on the distribution of this funding. Thank you.
Councilman, I just want to understand, did you bring that up now because you wanted the city administrator to address that, or?
I just brought it up because I have requested that of the administration and have not received those updates.
Okay. Maybe next time, new business, but that's fine. Okay. No city department reports. Report of the clerk of council.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Well, now we're back to you. Public comment. So we're going to do a public comment now, first on agenda items, then on non-agenda items. Three minutes. Say your name, the street you live on, and then go.
All right. First up, I have Jack Valanci.
Hi, I'm Jack Valanci. I live on Yorkshire Road, and my office has been at the corner of Cedar and Grandview Road since September of 1980. And my letter carrier for the past 30 years has been Mr. Ted Wilson. So I'm going to tell you a few things about Ted Wilson. I'm not going to tell you everything he shared with me, but I'll tell you a few things. Among the things that Ted shared with me is that when he was young, his father told him that as the oldest of five children, he was responsible for supporting his younger siblings. Now, one of his brothers learned about computers in the army and went on to a career in IT. Another brother earned a PhD, speaks five languages, and was an interpreter at embassies in Washington, D.C. before becoming a university professor. Despite being shunned at a local Cadillac dealer's sales and service staff, Ted drove a caddy. Ted donated a kidney to his sister. Ted took a bullet during an armed robbery at a restaurant. Every year, I give Ted a Jewish calendar to help him teach his Sunday School students about the Jewish holidays. Ted was and is a union leader and has traveled extensively on union business. Now, very occasionally, very occasionally, Ted criticized his employer, the United States Postal Service. Ted was not receptive to criticism about his employer, the United States Postal Service. Ted started carrying mail when I was eight years old. Thank you all so much for your time.
You know, I thought I knew you, but evidently. I can see that. Go ahead.
All right. So that's it for agenda items.
Oh.
Move on to non-agenda. Matthew Haberbush?
City Council and the mayor. My name is Matt Hara Bush. I live on Bellfield Avenue. I've been a resident for about four years. Great job, Councilmember Larson. I'm putting together the ceasefire resolution draft. I've listened in on the committee of the whole, and I hope your amendments are really good and that you bring the language to the floor two weeks from now while civilians continue to be murdered in Gaza. And I hope that, it seems like you have enough consensus to probably pass it as an emergency resolution, and I hope you do. And I hope that this resolution actually helps to end this American-funded war. Thank you.
I'm just here about Lot 27. Sorry. Declan Sinnet, owner of Parnell's Pub. I've been in business in this city for 27 years. Lot 27, I'm just, as Mr. Petrus said, I just need updates on what is happening. As a business owner, we're retail. We don't get them days back. So every day that we can't park our customers, we lose money. So we need to know where these people can park so we can do business. That's all. Okay?
So we should definitely send this one over. Okay. Thank you.
Lynn Quintrell?
I'm going to try to move this to make it easier for everybody. I'm Lynn Quintrell. I live at 12546 Cedar Road. I'm also the business owner of Apple Tree Books on Cedar Hill. And I'm also here to convey my concern about Lot 27 and the complete lack of communication from the city regarding where our public customers can park. I think it was very nice that they accommodated the permit parkers right away, but that's not helping to sustain our business. We need places for our customers to park and clear signage to that effect, not signage at the bottom of the ramp that they have to drive by before they can figure out where they're going to park. I would also hope that when a solution is presented, and I'm sure as has been stated, they're working on something at a glacial pace, I'm hoping that there will be appropriate signage as well, with a big M for, a big P for parking, and also that the towing signs in that private lot would be removed during that period. So again, I'm concerned for the businesses in our block that are severely impacted by the closure of that lot.
Fran Mench, I live on, excuse me, I live on Chelsea Road. I read with interest this article on the front page of the Sun Press. PAC Begins Recall Petition Drive Against Brennan. Brennan is the mayor of University Heights. I was struck by the similarities and the reasons that the PAC gave for recalling that Mayor Brennan and what is going on in our city. It's my understanding that the drive against Brennan is based on his not permitting city council members to talk to directors about budget issues and also failure to provide oversight of the planning department. And I saw many similarities between that and what is going on in our city. It's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that city council members cannot speak directly to directors of various departments. I've had city council peoples tell me repeatedly, it's up to the mayor. It's up to the mayor. So also, any kind of correspondence between citizens and departments or between the mayor, there are four people, it's my understanding, there's, besides the mayor, there's three people in the mayor's office to help with his administrative duties. The city administrator, the executive assistant, and the mayor action center coordinator. None of these people respond to emails. So what is happening is that city council doesn't have any responsibility because it's up to the mayor. The directors of the departments don't have any responsibility because it's up to the mayor. So the mayor has the cleanliness of administering something as an autocrat, but citizens are lost in this shuffle because you don't have responsibility, directors don't have responsibility. So citizens are cut out of this. We can't go to our city council members to advocate. And when we do contact members of the mayor's office, we get no response. So we are cut out of it. I'm hoping that everyone who advocated for the new form of government, this new mayor form of government, will consider seriously my statement that perhaps we should look, as University Heights did, we should look at recalling our mayor on the basis of various charges. I would hope that those people would take that up and consider it seriously. As my late husband used to say, "A word to the wise is sufficient."
Robbie Picker?
I live on Kensington Road. My name is Kobe Picker. I'm a member of Cleveland Jewish Voice for Peace and also the Cleveland Democratic Socialists of America, whom I do not represent. I commend the council, the members who have drafted and... I commend the council, the members who have drafted and introduced ceasefire resolutions to the committee of the whole meeting. Please move them to a first reading. The situation in Palestine gets worse every day. The death toll is climbing. The food, water, and medical resources are at dire levels. It is urgent that the council put this on the agenda as soon as possible. And once you move it to a first reading, amend it. My Jewish values call me to ask you to strengthen this resolution. Councilman Kuda said it best in the committee of the whole when he said, a lot has happened since the resolution you passed in the aftermath of October 7th. Indeed, a lot has. Over 30,000 Palestinians have been killed by the Israeli military. As the mayor said, huge numbers of children are dead. The occupation of the West Bank is tightening. The war crimes against Gaza are increasing. The decades-long campaign of ethnic cleansing against the Palestinian people is reaching a climax. And all of this is happening on our dime as Congress continues to write checks to the Israeli government. The city of Cleveland Heights in their earlier resolution had no problem bringing attention to the number of individuals who were killed. Amend this resolution to include the over 30,000 Palestinians who have been killed. The earlier, earlier resolution also had no problem condemning the attack on October 7th. Please condemn the ongoing onslaught against the Palestinian people. Lastly, we do not have the luxury of calling for a negotiated ceasefire. Call for an immediate unconditional ceasefire. Indeed, there are no words that you can draft to unify your residents on this issue. We are divided on this issue. We need you to be leaders. Be brave. Introduce the resolution. Make it strong and pass it. Thank you.
Akshay Singh.
Council President and Mayor, my name's Akshay Singh. Still live at 25, 85 Yuglud Heights. And yeah, it's been a minute since I've seen you. I'm really, I just want to first say thank you from the jump to former Council President Hart for commitment to introducing a resolution, to Councilwoman Maddox for drafting one as well, and Councilwoman Larson for this latest one. I don't have a lot to say that hasn't already been said. Since we last spoke, the AFL-CIO has called for a ceasefire. And I think that's, that's been a momentous call for peace. And just like for folks as, you know, we know we like to tout our labor endorsements when we, when we're endorsed in the campaigns, it'd be great to have the same kind of dedication of listening to labor year-round. And so, yeah, the, last time I provided a comment, the hardest part of delivering any of the words was my friend Mohammed's 60-year-old, 60-plus-year-old parents were moving through Gaza trying to find a safe house. And I didn't actually get a response, not that I asked for one, but no one quite asked for a response about, you know, how they might have been. They, they were able to successfully evacuate from Gaza. But it's wild to say these words successfully in the context of ethnic cleansing and that they were, it's like if people who were successfully able to get out of Bosnia when Serbs came through. All of that to say is, please, consider some amendments to the, the resolution from, from Councilwoman Larson. I think the number of Palestinian people that have been killed in Gaza is worth acknowledgement. I think the names of Heights High alumni are worth acknowledgement. And I don't think that that would be a divisive thing as we heard comments about Councilwoman Maddox's resolution. I think it would be brave enough to acknowledge the truth. Thank you.
Graham Ball.
Good evening, Council President Kuda, Mayor Sarin, members of council. I really appreciated the conversation in the committee of the whole today. I thought it was robust. It was refreshing. Good, good to see. I really found myself agreeing with most of what was said, both praise of Councilwoman Larson's, Councilwoman Larson's draft, but also criticism of some of the specific language. Really, I do appreciate you taking the time to write that. That is, that is not easy. It is a brave thing to do, for sure. I, I'm a little bit curious about the, you know, you say that the, the goal is to bring people together, and I think that that is an admirable goal, no doubt. You know, to heal as a community is something we need to do. But in my view, the key portion of the resolution is the portion that calls on the Biden administration to take action. So specifically, that would be section two, which reads, "This council supports all efforts to resolve the tragic conflict, including unconditional, immediate return of all hostages held in Gaza, a negotiated ceasefire, and delivering of humanitarian aid to all who are suffering." I feel like that section in particular is not particularly balanced, which I know you said was your goal, and I, of course, I believe that that's true. Talking about the unconditional immediate return of all hostages, and then a negotiated ceasefire, and then humanitarian aid to all those who are suffering, I feel like could be better phrased, you know, with either a negotiated return of hostages or, say, the immediate unconditional ceasefire. All right? Just to fairly balance those things. And, you know, this is, you know, given in good faith, and I, and I know you're taking in good faith. Councilmember Boyd mentioned the Cleveland Heights High School graduate who sang in the VMD with me, who was killed by Israel with American-made weapons in October. And I just wanted to say for the record, her name was Barah Abu Aleish. She was 26 years old, and she had just graduated from medical school. I also just wanted to, I was thinking about what President Kuda said about the moment being different now than it was when you passed the first resolution. And I, I think it's, it is different, but it is no less urgent, and it's no less emotional. I, I think of Aaron Bushnell, the active-duty airman who moved to Hudson, Ohio last year. He was volunteering feeding the homeless in Akron and recently burnt himself to death in front of the Israeli embassy in DC. He demonstrated the pain and passion that we all feel in the face of the relentless murder of Palestinian civilians since October. So myself and others, we've been asking for this resolution to be passed since December. I would ask you to consider, in this meeting, to bring it forward for first reading, to amend the agenda to do so, so that then amendments can be made next week. I, I really don't feel that this, the passage of this resolution needs to be delayed any further. So thank you all for your efforts on this.
Melody Joy Hart.
Yes. I forget I'm short. Melody Joy Hart, 2976 Monmouth Road. And I'm here tonight to speak regarding Housing and Racial Justice Task Force. As you know, housing has been an issue that I've been focused on for many years, including six-plus years on Greater Cleveland Congregations, Cleveland Heights Housing Team, and while in council as well. It's time to expand the civil option from what we put in it, to extend it further, provide additional tools for the city to use, and further strengthen the ability to enforce code against our out-of-country, out-of-state, and even out-of-country absentee landlords. Racial Justice Task Force provided an outline and some language to be enacted into the code. I'll be working on that with one of your council members to bring it forward. There are also suggested changes in other areas that the RJTF evaluated. I encourage council to begin to review and bring forward the recommendations they provided last year from our two-plus years of service to this community. It's important work, and it needs to be considered. Thank you.
Finally, we have Juanita Brent.
And before state rep, who just happens to be our state rep, speaks. I, I just want to say, Melody, we did set up a meeting with Rhonda Davis Lovejoy and a couple others for April 9th to talk about implementation. The reason it didn't happen earlier was because of scheduling problems, but, but that is, I believe, do I, do I have that right? That, that, did everybody respond in the affirmative that they were available that day?
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Thank you, Council President, to the mayor, to our lovely council people. My name is Juanita Brent, and I just happen to be a state representative. I also happen to be your state representative for, for the Cleveland Heights area city. I come here for a particular moment because it's a personal counsel that I have been knowing for a very long time, since I was a small child, unlike the mayor. But I'm talking about Councilwoman Janine Boyd and this being her last council meeting with us. I've been knowing Janine since I was about five years old, and our lives in some different types of way have always been intertwined, no matter if it's how we have been brought into our families and how we, our lives are very much aligned in so many different ways. Hopefully, the camera's not on her because people at home, she is crying right now. I just want you guys to know that. But she's definitely been an example, a mentor, protector, sometimes a confidante in so many different ways. So I've seen her in these different journeys, and she's allowed me to be a part of it, no matter if it was, you know, the journey of finding her baby, you know, or, or the journey of, you know, her encouraging me to run for office, or the, the journey of introducing me to Cleveland Heights to actually run for this area. She has been with me through all of this. So even if I wasn't your state rep, I was going to come anyway because that's my girl. And anyone who does not know, you know now, Janine's been my friend for a long time, longer than our political lives all put together, I've been knowing her. For those at home who don't know, she has had a heck of a legacy that she has built, she has built, making sure she advocated for domestic violence. When Ayesha was killed by her ex-husband, Councilwoman Boyd stood up very quickly to make sure there was legislation that was introduced. And when things, she came back to the city of Cleveland Heights, she also made sure that that was introduced and passed here and fully funded here within the city of Cleveland Heights. Because we know domestic violence is a real thing. We've seen such an uptick of that, particularly during the pandemic, and we have to have our police departments ready and trained to be able to, to address that, no matter if it was dealing with equal pay for equal work. And it's, I could, the list could go on and on and on for the different things that she's been advocating for, kinship care, foster care. I could just keep going on and on. And she's left her mark in this place, but then also different places within the state and also within the world. So I would not be the, the sister friend than I am, and also her state rep, which I'm proud to say. If I did not bring accommodations from the state, I'm not going to read it because who, who really wants to read the, the, this stuff out here on the paper? But I want people to hear from the heart that you guys are losing a gem. You are losing a person who has bit her tongue to play with the team. She's a person who has stood up for people when they didn't deserve her kindness. She has given people grace when they did not deserve any. And I know this was not an easy decision for her to make for her family, but one thing I know for sure with Councilwoman Janine Boyd, she's always going to put her family first. So as much as I selfishly want her to stay, and I'm going to miss her and Robbie like crazy, I'm going to miss Robbie the most. And I know she's making the best decision for her family because that's the type of woman she is, and that's the type of lady she has always been, and she's always going to put her family first. And I say this to everyone who wants to be a leader. If you don't take care of home, if you don't take care of your family, none of these titles mean nothing. You got to take care of your family. So I know 100% she is making this choice for her family, and that is it. That is it for folks at home. And we have to love on her as she has made these decisions and just accept it. So from the great state of Ohio, well, we, we going to pray on that word, great. But from the state of Ohio, my name is Juanita Brent, and I want to present this accommodation for my councilwoman, Janine Boyd. Can she come out here to the front and we can get a picture real quick? Thank you. Can somebody take the picture too? Right here. You got it.
As hard as it is, we're going to move on with the agenda. These are first readings only, and then I sure will want to address Councilwoman Boyd a little bit later, but let's do the first readings. Eddie, go ahead.
I have resolution number 037-2024 on first reading. A resolution appointing Harmony Cross, Mayor Scoach, Sam Bivens, and Sarahline Oakley Tomes as members of the Citizens Advisory Committee of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, introduced by Councilmember Cobb. I have resolution number 038-2024 on first reading. A resolution appointing John Tally as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, introduced by Councilmember Cobb. I have resolution number 039-2024 on first reading. A resolution appointing Elkanon Stern as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, introduced by Councilmember Cobb. I have resolution number 040-2024 on first reading. A resolution appointing Charlie Mossbrook, Howard Meyer, Cole Ware, and Aaron Hughesware as members of the Transportation and Mobility Committee of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by Councilmember Cobb. I have resolution number 041-2024 on first reading. A resolution appointing Catalina Wagers, John Barber, Tammy Masuoka, and William Hanniven as members of the Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, again, introduced by Councilmember Cobb. Next, I have resolution number 042-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program for Road Salt for the 2024-2025 winter season, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by Mayor Sarin. Finally, I have resolution number 043-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Knolls Municipal Forestry LLC to update the street tree inventory system, introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Thank you, Eddie. We're going to do second readings now. These were discussed in committee of the hall. First ordinance is 292024.
I have ordinance number 292024 on second reading, an ordinance declaring improvements to certain parcels within the city of Cleveland Heights to, to be a public purpose exempting the improvements to such parcels from real property taxation for a period of 30 years, requiring the owners of such parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing an urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of such payments, and approving a school compensation agreement with the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District, all pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 5709.41, 5709.42, and 5709.43, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Thank you, Eddie. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Anybody?
Second.
Thank you. The, the ordinance has been motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
None on my left. Well, let me see if we got any on my right. Okay, Mr. Mayor.
So again, I, I did want to thank council for considering this. I do believe that it is going to be an important piece in the movement that we're making in Cleveland Heights. This is, is taking a district that has been neglected as well in our community and setting it on a different path. And, and I neglected to mention earlier the sort of wraparound work that we're doing. We recently were notified by NOACA that we are the recipients of a TLCI, Transportation for Livable Communities, grant in, to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars for the implementation of a transportation plan for Taylor Road that goes from the, the city line in East Cleveland all the way through University Heights. And the goal of that plan is to make Taylor And the goal of that plan is to make Taylor Road more pedestrian-friendly and conducive to the type of walkable neighborhood that we hope to see there. This is similar to the work that we are currently engaged in right now, the planning work that we're currently engaged in related to the Noble Road Corridor as well. And we hope to see the same kind of continued movement on Noble as we are seeing on Taylor. So I want to encourage council to support this. This is the first of many economic development projects that I intend to shepherd through to completion in the interest of rebuilding our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say, this property has such an interesting history. I grew up, right, that's where I hung out. That's where Heights Furniture &amp; Toy was, and the variety store, and so forth. And it's great to see this happen. I mean, this is, not all the, the history of this property is not all great. There was an owner that, you know, didn't take care of it and didn't pay the taxes and then, you know, but we made lemonade out of that, I think, by this. And I, I'm just glad to see that this city is open for business, that we're thriving now, and we're, it's one development project after another. I think the mayor put it very well. This is all part of the momentum, and I would look favorably on a motion to... Oh, we already got the motion. But I would fully expect this council to support this. So Addie, why don't you call the roll on this one?
Maddox.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Boyd. Kuda.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
All right, next I have Resolution Number 033-2024 on second reading. A resolution authorizing an agreement with Roper Lockbox LLC for lock boxes to support a senior residential lockbox program, which permits the Cleveland Heights Fire Department access to provide emergency services to the Cleveland Heights senior residents.
All right, do I have a motion to adopt this?
It's all moved.
All right, any discussion, please?
Thank you. I almost called you Madam President, sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. So I had intended on having a committee hearing on this just for education purposes and just ran out of time, so my sincere apologies. We did have discussion in council of the hall, and the mayor was able to answer some questions that some of my neighbors presented to me. And I, this is, this is a highly favored piece of legislation by council, and it will help our seniors and those who generally just have, you know, higher risks in their homes, just living independently. And having a lockbox accessible to first responders certainly will increase safety and response time, I think. You know, getting, getting folks to hospitals, et cetera, when necessary. And there will be a launch, likely a launch that provides a lot of education on the website as things unfold, as the program is built and as things unfold. So we do, we're excited to pass this legislation tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, Addie, go ahead and call the roll.
Boyd. Cobb.
Aye.
Kuda.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Maddox.
Aye.
Next, I have Resolution Number 034-2024 on second reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Valley Freightliner, Inc. for the acquisition of a Freightliner 114 SD plus tandem axle cab and chassis for the Department of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Addie, call the roll.
Cobb.
Aye.
Boyd. Larson.
Aye.
Kuda.
Aye.
Maddox.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Next, I have Resolution Number 035-2024 on second reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Valley Freightliners, Inc. for the acquisition of two Freightliner 114 SD plus semi-tractors for the Department of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Addie, call the roll, please.
Maddox.
Aye.
Boyd. Kuda.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Next, I have Resolution Number 036-2024 on second reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Gladhill Road Machinery Company for the acquisition of a 14-foot stainless steel dump body with salt spreader and plow package for the Department of Public Works.
So moved.
And a second, help?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Just so you know, this was all previously discussed. Actually, the last three were all part of kind of the same package. Go ahead, Addie, call the roll.
Cobb.
Aye.
Larson.
Aye.
Petrus.
Aye.
Maddox.
Aye.
Kuda.
Aye.
Boyd.
All right, next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. A bunch of resolutions. I guess, Addie, you'll read through them, and then we'll vote on the end.
I've got Resolution Number 045-2024 on first reading. A resolution proclaiming April 2024 to be National Poetry Month and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by President Kuda, Vice President Russell, councilmembers Maddox, Boyd, Larson, Cobb, and Petrus. Next, I have Resolution Number 046-2024 on first reading. A resolution joining with HUD and other communities throughout the nation in the observation of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month, reaffirming the City of Cleveland Heights' commitment to open housing, fair housing, excuse me, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by President Kuda, Vice President Russell, councilmembers Maddox, Boyd, Larson, Cobb, and Petrus. Next, I have Resolution Number 047-2024 on first reading. A resolution proclaiming April 2024 to be National Autism Acceptance Month and April 2nd, 2024 to be World Autism Awareness Day, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by Mayor Sarin. Finally, I have Resolution Number 048-2024 on first reading. A resolution proclaiming April 7th through 13th, 2024 to be National Library Week, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure, introduced by President Kuda, Vice President Russell, councilmembers Maddox, Boyd, Larson, Cobb, and Petrus.
Okay, can I have a motion? Can I have a motion to suspend the rolls?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Do we need to do a roll call on this? No. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now move for adoption of all those resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes. Committee reports, who would like to go first? How about Gail Larson?
Thank you, President Kuda. The Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee met this morning, and Alice Dresko presented a lot of information about the effects of gas leaf blowers on public health. I gave a summary to the committee in my Thursday meeting with the mayor, Director Klinkscale, and President Kuda. We covered several topics, including sidewalk repair, business, and apartment building recycling, where all the leaves go that are removed from our properties, the $1 million of ARPA funds council allocated to lead safe programs, reports from the Finance Department, traffic calming for Noble Elementary, and the intersection of Cadwell and Hampshire and the South Euclid Deer Management Program. Vice President Russell and I attended the National League of Cities Conference in Washington, DC this past week. I learned a lot about the work the federal agencies do for us and the funds that are available. One of those funds, Brownfield Clearing, is going to open up for more projects in the fall. The mayor did tell us that the grant the administration is already seeking should be awarded before that, so the old area at the Noble Triangle could be demolished. April is celebrated as Earth Month around the globe. Here in Cleveland Heights, we'll have opportunities to participate in learning about the earth and the challenges we face to preserve it as a livable planet. The first event is free. It's a community party hosted by Made Cleveland on April 3rd. Attendees will craft bird feeders and shopping bags from upcycled materials, so we can all learn about repurposing rather than throwing more materials into the landfills. There'll be more information out there on social media for you to get the details that you need. Finally, the Finance Committee met at 5:00 PM today with Acting Finance Director Schuster to discuss the effects the short-term rental legislation would have on her department. After discussion, the committee agreed to collect data regarding other municipalities prior to the next Housing and Building Committee meeting led by Councilperson Petrus. I'll be looking at the revenues that these other cities have received for their excise taxes that they've charged and their registration fees. And I do have one more, I'm sorry. Thursday night at 6:30, we are celebrating the amazing women of Cleveland Heights. I hope you all will come. And tonight, I'm going to announce to you the people who won the three categories that we have. For inspiring young women, Astrid Berkel, Ivy Williams, Jayluk Scruggs. Women in business, Bridget Thibault owns Luna Bakery, Laura Di Alessandro, Cleveland Photo Fest. And amazing women, the general category, Blanche Villanci, Linda Strajewski, Rhonda Davis-Lovejoy, and Sarah Wolf.
Wow.
My pleasure.
Councilwoman Larson, I have one question for you. I remember during one of your meetings, recycling for businesses was discussed. And then, can you tell me, just remind me, what was decided as far as maybe re-offering this?
The opt-in for businesses to recycle is still out there, and Director Klinkscale is going to put out some information about recycling programs that we have. She's going to include that in there, that those businesses could recycle.
Okay.
There's an opt-in program that still exists for them.
And they're gonna be contacted, correct? The businesses?
Well, I didn't get that promise.
Okay, didn't, okay. I was just wondering how this was, you know, just seemed like maybe it might have been time to kind of re-offer that, but I guess we'll see how that works. Okay, and other committee reports? Councilman Petrus?
President, the Housing and Building Committee held a special meeting on February 27th to work through your short-term rental legislation. We have a second special meeting scheduled for 10:00 AM on Tuesday, April 2nd, to work through the rest of the legislation. I met with Mayor Sarin and City Administrator Williams on March 11th. We discussed a variety of housing topics. I share the mayor's belief that we need to get the CIC up and running. I look forward to the mayor nominating people to the group for council's consideration. The committee authorized the creation of a housing-related survey. The purpose of the survey is to provide an easy opportunity for residents to share housing-related comments, which the committee will then take into consideration when prioritizing its work this year. Mr. Hannah, the city's law director, advised that the committee use a city-managed system. I sent the survey that the committee drafted to the city's Communications Department last month, and I'm waiting to hear back from Director Thomas. Because of scheduling conflicts, the March 12th meeting of the Housing and Building Committee was canceled. As a reminder, the committee regularly meets at 5:00 PM on the second Tuesday of the month, which means that our next regularly scheduled meeting is at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, April 9th. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other committee reports? All righty. Old business. New business. Okay. Councilman?
I just wanted to take a couple of moments to acknowledge my colleague here, Councilwoman Boyd, as well as this is her last evening. And I kind of want to bookend this for her with two things that come to mind as I wish her well going forward. And if you'll excuse me for just a second, I'm gonna switch hats and put on my pastor hat for just a second. Matthew 7:15 says that you'll know a tree by their fruit, and that has absolutely been clear since my time sitting on this council with Janine Boyd and watching her in leadership over the years, even before I got here, I've learned so much. When you look behind this woman, you see a trail of good works, a trail of good fruit, a trail of impact. And I want you to know that I appreciate everything that you've done in this community. I appreciate how you have set an example and set a standard for so many of us coming up through in politics and in leadership and how to navigate a changing world. And so I want you to know that I honor and I appreciate you and your service, not just for the City of Cleveland Heights, but the entire state of Ohio. Your character, your integrity has always spoken for itself. Your confidence has been a light in so many dark rooms. And I just want you to know that the marginalized, our communities, you've lent your voice to places that few people refuse to go. And I just want you to know how much I appreciate and I honor you for that. And the last thing I want to say to you as you transition, as you shift, is Psalm 37. Psalm 37, 23 and 24 says that the steps of a good man are established by the Lord. And I know that no matter where you go, you're going to continue to produce good works. I wish you well, and I know that you will take both grace and power and confidence into every room. You'll continue to speak for our people, speak for our community, and continue to have a huge impact. And so I just want you to know that you will be missed. It has been a pleasure, and I have learned so much from you. And I absolutely appreciate you and wish you well.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So, cat's out the bag. Gosh, I didn't expect to be emotional. So, as most of you know, I just over a year ago returned. I had the privilege of being appointed by the mayor, who I respect greatly. And in large part, it was to resume the work that I learned in this room when my mother sat here. And that is to create informed, balanced policy that helps all people and fixes the voices of residents into law. And to serve as objectively and symmetrically as possible and inclusively and transparently. And that was really, quite selfishly, my hope in part to heal from losing her, laying her to rest. And so I did, I got here and I nerded out and wrote a bunch of legislation and loved it, that work, again. And I am humbled to hear my colleagues and the mayor and my state rep speak of that work that way. And as has been mentioned, I'm relocating, moving my family in large part so that my dad and my son are surrounded with the kind of love my mom showered on us when she was still here. And I'm grateful for the time you've allowed me to serve you all the years I've served. It's been over 10 years of elected service, and I'm really grateful. I've learned a lot, and it's followed me in spaces, the lessons, the ones I didn't want to learn. So let me say that to this council in the spirit of my mom. I don't think I would be a leader or a servant leader if I did not offer some wisdom, both to the constituents whom elected, who elected everyone up here, and to my colleagues. And that wisdom is that, I think, like most people, I've watched sort of an erosion to civility in political debate over the past several years, I would say honestly, since the previous presidential administration, and an erosion to the democratic process, you know, legislating and committee work. And we've mostly seen it, I think, in Ohio at the state level when we look at our supermajority gerrymandering, even in the face of signed petitions over and over again, and hours and hours and hours and hours and days and days and days of testimony. We've seen it on other initiatives, ballot initiatives, where residents had an opportunity to speak what they wanted into existence and the backlash from the legislature to that voice, that collective voice. But I'm telling you, I've seen it in this space. I've seen it here. And I was in denial about it when I first got here. I was in denial, I just, I didn't want to think it could be that significant, even in the bastion of progressive politics and commitment to civility and inclusion and transparency that I grew up knowing as my city and my local government. But I have, I've seen it. It's here. It trickled down. We are not immune. It is not appropriate to, you know, be adversarial with our administration. We should be working together. We should be working together. It is not appropriate. It does not lend itself to civility, let me say, to political civility and debate that ends in resolution and good policy and good trajectory, positive trajectory, to be adversarial and combative because we don't agree with the mayor or with each other. It's not, it does not lend itself to political civility and inclusion and transparency to sort of outsmart the democratic process, the legislative process, and create our own path to legislation passing, even if immediate gratification is available. In the long term, that will hurt us. You know, look at the forefathers. You know, I don't like to quote them much because they owned slaves that look like me, but I'm going to say this. The very system that they created, they created, I believe, God breathed wisdom into them to create something that would be so objective, that it would be difficult to intoxicate with greed and bias. And the evidence of that is that that very system is what led to the legislation that came out of the civil rights movement. So, the people that they enslaved, for instance, when the tide turned sufficiently enough on their backs, they were able to use that objective system of democracy to change law that benefits all of us here to this day. It would not have been the case had that democratic system, the pillars of democracy, whether we're talking about the committee process, legislative process, that would not have happened if those processes had been laden with bias and subjectivity and greed. So, they did get that right. And there's no need for us to tamper with it, in my opinion, my humble opinion. So, I would just caution everyone here to keep your eyes on the policy because it's meaningful. And if it's not meaningful, if it stops becoming meaningful, if it stops presenting as meaningful, then take issue with that through your elected policymakers, your elected legislators. And process matters because it is intended. Democracy is not fast. It's not intended to be fast. You have to live in another sort of form of government for fast policy, and you will have issue with that too, I promise. But democracy is not intended to be fast. It's intended to be thoughtful. It's intended to be discussed. It's intended to be debated. It's intended to be vetted. It's intended to be informed by those electing people to create it. So, if it looks like a drive-thru at McDonald's, that's not good policy. If it looks like a party after 12 hours of conversation, that's not good democracy. That's not good policy. And lastly, I will say this. When it comes to resolutions intended to sway one argument or another at any level of government outside of this one, unless it's, you know, right next door, like at the State House or the State Senate or the county, you know, it gets harder and harder to do. We are not federal, you know, we're not exposed to cabinets and the discussions that go on in cabinets. I worked for a cabinet member at the federal level, and I was not exposed to the cabinet members' conversations. So, be patient with your, with your councilpeople on that, in that regard. It is not easy to talk about stuff that is painful for everybody, confusing, or heartbreaking. It's just not easy to talk about, especially when we, you know, what we are fluent in is so much more local. So, be patient on that, on that regard, in that regard, please. And then, so really, lastly, may I thank you for the opportunity to work on the legislation that I wrote a list and sent to the law director my first week or two. Thank you for looking at all my drafts, law director. Thank you for every person who came and testified on the legislation in committee. Thank you to my colleagues for having the confidence to support that legislation. And thank you for reminding me of what it's like to be in this room and the honor that it is. Thank you, Addie. Thank you to all the administration. You all are amazing, and I'll be around here and there. Just thank you. I would like to move to accept the resignation of Councilmember Janine Boyd, and I would also like to add, I wish you good luck and happiness on this new journey.
Anybody else like to say something? We would, we would need a second on that, by the way, before we...
Well, I'll, I'll second it, since it looks like she's made up her mind she's going to leave us. I was one of the councilmembers that voted for your appointment to fill the vacancy because I thought that you would bring much-needed experience and gravitas to this body. And I think as evidenced by your remarks right now and your year of service, you brought that gravitas and experience to this inexperienced city council. And I know that you are going to be missed by all of us, and good luck.
Well, I, before we vote to accept the resignation, I would, I would like to say that your relationship with your mom is just such a beautiful thing. I mean, I, I've known your mom a lot longer than I've known you, but I can't think of you without thinking of your mom. It's not possible. And I know how much that means to you, and I know how much family means to you, and I know how many things have to align to make a decision of this magnitude. It's, it's really something you're, you know, you have your fiance and your, of course, your dad with all his brothers and sisters, and your son moving into Virginia. And I, I just can't, you know, so much has been said already. I'm, I'm not going to repeat that. I'm just going to say this, this is a very exciting time for you and your family. This is a, this is a big, big move. It's, it's quite an adventure, and we just all wish you the best. You know, this is, this is such a brave thing to do, and I know a hard thing to do. And, and I just want you to know, you're very appreciated. And with that, Addie, would you please call the roll?
Cobb.
I.
Kuta.
Hi.
Larson.
Hi.
Petrus.
Hi.
Maddox.
Hi.
All right. Any other new business? All right. Then we'll go to the council president's report. Let's see. I'll start with Gail's resolution. Sorry, Councilwoman Larson's. So, oh, geez. In some ways, I'm not a fan of resolutions. We did get quite a bit of mail about like, why do you guys do this? But there is something about Cleveland Heights that calls for involvement and so forth. And, you know, we look at, I mean, I can't help but look at, at the role model that I grew up with, which was Martin Luther King, and it's just impossible to, to live up to that standard. I mean, all wars are awful. This resolution that Councilwoman Larson put out on the Gaza War is no exception. The wars are, they represent a failure of diplomacy and the limitations of our governments in settling things collaboratively without military confrontation. Whenever Martin Luther King needed a moral compass or to get his courage together, he did that on April 4th, 1967. This was just a year before he was killed. And he did it at Riverside Church in Manhattan. At that time, and I don't mean to be flip about this, but there were 10,000 American soldiers killed. 58,000 would eventually be killed. And King said, "I come to this magnificent house of worship tonight because my conscience leaves me no other choice." He explained that a time, this is a quote, "A time comes when silence is a betrayal," and that time had come in relation to Vietnam. And I think that's what some of you are saying now. I don't ever, and this goes to Councilwoman Boyd's about civility. I don't ever remember thinking Martin Luther King, I mean, I just don't ever remember anything him saying. I never found it offensive, never. I never even thought it was gratuitously harsh. But when he made that statement about the Vietnam War, he was essentially canceled in his time, you know, 57 years ago. More than 60 newspapers rallied against his speech, saying he had diminished his usefulness to the cause, to his country and to his people. That was the New York Times. Many civil rights leaders and organizations criticized him too, including the NAACP. But despite the withering public condemnation, King continued to speak out. And, you know, I, I know none of us are like of that caliber, but it is something to shoot for. So, let me just say, I'm sorry that we're taking so long with this. I want to thank Susan Miller and Deborah Van Cleef for sending some very thoughtful, in one case, a video clip, and in the other case, a news report. And thank you, Gail Larson, for working on this revolution, resolution, and giving it your usual thoughtful, caring touch. So, we'll see what happens on April 1st when we come back, and hopefully, we'll try to get something done with that. There are several meetings this week. Again, tomorrow at Monticello Middle School around safety in the Noble Corridor. There's a, if you're interested in the Noble Station Project, there is a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. here. And then, Addie, there are also two meetings on the Noble Station Project. I want to say April 10th is the Planning Commission, and can you help me with the third one, ABR? Sorry, I should not have done that. I want to say that's on the 17th. Thank you.
17th is Board of Zoning Appeals.
ABR is the April 4th?
Yes, that's correct. April 4th.
All right. And then, April 10th is the Planning Commission meeting, and this is all again on the Noble Station Project. And then, we have the Women's History Month on Thursday at 6:30 p.m. at the Community Center. So, if there is no further business, do I have a, oh, maybe we do. Oh, my goodness. Yes, thank you. And I think I even wrote this down, and I had to cover it up. Oh, so, we are going to adjourn to committee of the whole to discuss process. Do I need a motion for that?
You, you would, Mr. President, but I may be wrong. I would ask the council clerk, I think you adjourned your committee of the whole meeting. And if that's the case, I would say that there's no reason that you couldn't have conversation here about process.
Ah, okay. Then, then we can do that right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, yeah, I'd like, what I'd like to do is just stay a few minutes and discuss the process we're going to use for the council replacement. And Addie has a couple of documents. One is the application that we would like to post tomorrow. And the other, and again, this is all because we have 45 days to do this, which may sound like plenty of time, but when you look at what we have to do, it's kind of a little bit of a crunch. So, the, the two documents you're looking at, one is the council application, and this is what we've used before. Just looking this over real quick. Yes, sir. Councilman?
Was there any prior discussion to this before today? Because several of my council colleagues were aware that we were having this discussion, and I was not.
Um...
So, how, how were they privy to this?
The only thing I did was I discussed this with, I met with Addie, and I asked her to pull this up.
Did you meet with any other members of council?
We did not.
To discuss this process at all?
We did not.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity.
Sure.
President?
Yes.
I was asked to see if the League of Women Voters would do interviews again, so...
I was, because you stated right before he stated this, that you reminded him that we were discussing this tonight.
I thought we were talking about the application.
No, I was, this, this entire discussion was what I was asking, and that's what I wanted clarity on, because she clearly knew that we were about to have a conversation. And so, that's why I wanted to know. So, who else did you speak to besides Councilwoman Larson?
That's the only person I spoke to, and that was about asking the League of Women Voters, because I didn't want to put anything on this paper that may not happen.
Thank you.
Sure. So, why don't we talk about the application first? Anybody see anything they'd like to add, subtract? Yes. Oh, okay. Okay, I understand. So, we're going to, we're going to dismiss Councilwoman Boyd, who has a baby to take care of.
Sure.
Well, a toddler, really, yeah.
Mr. President, for clarification, is this, in essence, the same application that was used previously, or are there changes from...
Addie, to your knowledge, is there anything different on here?
The only difference, I believe, give me one second to pull it up. I don't actually have it up myself right now. There was an addition to, we moved, there was one question that was moved to the front that was previously kind of further down. And then, there was an addition, hold on one second. The addition of, what do you think your role as councilmember?
Okay.
As member of city council.
And that's the first one. And then, there's, I think, two more questions kind of connected with that first question. So, anything there?
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could, I remember whenever I applied for an open position, there was a question, and I can't remember if it was just through the League of Women Voters interview, or if it was also in the application about whether an applicant would be willing to run for, to be retained... be retained that year. Is that something that we'd want to include in here so that we could better evaluate?
That was usually the last question.
Applications.
And it's not...
To my, to my recollection, that was only the question asked in League of Women Voters interviews.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. So let's talk about the process. So we would probably need a motion for this. Is that correct? If we were to talk about posting an application? I'm asking the law director.
You could, excuse me, you could certainly do that.
Okay. So we don't have to decide this, this moment, but I do want to decide it before we leave. Everybody okay with us posting this application online tomorrow? And we'll, we'll do it formally after we go through this whole thing. So here, here was my thinking in putting this together.
Was that a question you just asked us, if we were okay with posting it?
Yes.
Okay. Because in the past, we've discussed the questions in the application each time that we've done this election. So we'll just, we're not, we're going to skip that part this time and just use what we had before this prior?
I asked, I just asked if everybody was okay with these questions. And I'm assuming, since I heard no objections, you know, there was one question about whether we included a question for the League of Women Voters, which we didn't. Is there something you would like to include in this that...
No, 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 we're, nothing.
All right. So this is what I was thinking. If, if we post the application tomorrow, and the last day for the application submission was Friday, March 29, then we could have the weekend to review the applications. And obviously, we can, we can review applications as they come in. But all of them would be in by the 29th. Then we could go into executive session on March 1, when we, I'm sorry, April 1, when we already have a meeting, and discuss the applicants. And then the League of Women Voters has agreed that, so we, again, we'd have all the applications in. And we could discuss whether or not we want them to, the League of Women Voters to interview all. I, that's probably something I would favor. But we could discuss that at that point. The League of Women Voters could start scheduling interviews on April 2 and finish hopefully by April 12. And then I believe what we've done in the past, and maybe the law director could help me with this, is we, we published all the videos at once. Is that correct? Or did we...
I, I, that sounds not incorrect, but I guess that's...
I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
Pretty sure.
Anybody else? Okay.
The alternative would be you post them on an ongoing basis, but then folks who haven't yet been interviewed have a bit of a leg up watching those.
Right. So if we did that, and then, again, reviewed them, and then, again, that April 12 is a Friday, if we did that, we'd have the weekend to look at them. And then we have a meeting scheduled on April 15. And we could discuss the applicants. And then if we wanted to have a special meeting or meetings, scheduling in-person interviews with some or all of the applicants, we could do that at that time. And then we'd have just a little over two weeks. The, the 45 days expires on May 2. We've been advised to not let it go past May 1. But we'd have a little over two weeks to interview and meet and make decisions. And there are no meetings scheduled after the 15th for the rest of April. So these would all be special meetings, if there were interviews or any kind of get-together to discuss the applicants and make a decision. So tell me what you think of this timeline, if it's doable, if there's anything you want to change. Councilman?
Seems fine to me. There's nothing on here at first glance that, at least from my perspective, I'd like to see changed. I am happy that Addie was able to answer the question that I had about the application. So at least I have no concerns with this.
All right. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I don't know how we can lay it out any differently. If we're going to interview each individual applicant, we have to have a short turnaround time for them to get their applications in. So I would encourage anybody that's interested to get their application in, start it, get it done this week.
Absolutely.
So that they can get in ahead of the game.
You know, it's funny. I, I mean, I look at this, and I see we have two weeks to interview, if we want to, in person, and make a decision. And that's, if we start tomorrow, you know, I mean, you know, this is, this is about as fast as, as we can do this, using, you know, of course, the League of Women Voters, which, you know, some people don't do that. But I, I find it very helpful, very useful. So why don't, why don't we, do we need to make a motion to adopt all of this? Or do we need just a motion for the posting of the application?
I, I mean, you, you may not need a motion for any of it, but I think that if you authorize the posting of the application and indicate in that motion what the application deadline is, you will have covered yourself and set yourself up for proceeding as you've outlined.
Okay. So why don't we, and Mayor, I just want to make sure, are you okay with the part where we might need some use of the administration's staff, you know, for the posting? And, and what else? And it is possible, we may need the conference room, obviously, staying out of the way of pre-scheduled meetings.
So as I stated in the, the leadership meeting, absolutely, you have our full support. We want to see council achieve this goal.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. You're shaking your head.
Because I, I appreciate the conversations, but sometimes we ask questions as, as if that wouldn't be a natural partnership to do. And so I, I think that's part of where the strain comes in, that we make an assumption that no mayor's going to tell us, no, we can't use a conference room in City Hall. So it's things like that.
Yeah, that's one way to look at it. Another way to look at it is being polite, asking the administration, and not assuming that we can just use...
Or it can continue to support the narrative that he's been completely unsupportive of his council, but...
Once again, you've managed to...
I didn't manage to do anything. I'm just...
No, you managed to...
This has continued to happen. And...
Excuse me. You have managed to, to put in a, in a bad light something that was completely innocent. Anyway, so we have, I guess, I would look favorably on a motion to adopt the timeline and the posting of the application.
Take a shot, Addie.
Mr. President, I move to post the application as presented to council tomorrow, March 19, with applications being accepted through March 29.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. With no further business, this meeting is adjourned.